Oh, hi.
Madam Mayor, I hope you're out.
Thank you.
I'm Kristin Leno, I'm the Financial Services Director. And tonight, we're gonna give a presentation to John Stade Jr. as our Employee of the Second Quarter for 2025. I nominated John, I was really excited that he won. He goes above and beyond every day. Every time I talk to him, or talk to someone else, he's assisting someone with something that's not even his job. There have been several times where I have gone to the rec center and he's just visiting the rec center, helping with an IT issue. And he'll just jump in and do whatever is needed to be done. He helped a young lady out in the parking lot change her flat tire in the middle of the summer because no one else was around to help. He is definitely a quality employee and I just think he deserves the recognition. So I want to bring him up and give him his award. And you can say a few words if you'd like. And the best part's the money, they always want the money.
Just wanna say thank you. It's very much a pleasure to be part of the city and working at the library and helping out wherever I can. It's just an awesome thing to do and be helpful in that way. Thank you.
John, what department are you with?
So I work at the library, I am with the IT department. But I do facilitate library and rec center IT needs as well as audio/video help across citywide projects. The video that Community Development showed for their essay, I put that together in partnership with Scott. That was my voice. So that was all my work. They had some very base guidelines and I tried to follow it the best they can while also producing a top-quality video for the city of Cottonwood.
Well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I think we'll get a picture after we have one more employee of the quarter and then we can do the picture of them and then...
Would you mind too, I just wanted to mention that John did beat out some worthy competition because other nominees were Ray Armahio of Transit and Lisa Lau of Finance. So there were two other nominations for that and we want to thank them for their brilliant work as well.
Yeah, we read their application statements and I think we were all very impressed by their contributions as well.
And I think Chief Frudenthal is gonna come up and present the next employee of the quarter.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's a privilege to be here tonight and recognize the employee of the third quarter, Detective Matt Strickland. So Detective Matt Strickland during the third quarter, the Cottonwood Police Department received a call of a bank robbery at the Walmart. And he responded and over $8,000 was stolen during this bank robbery. I happened to be working too and responded. I could tell you there was very limited suspect information to this armed robbery. We had very basic information, the suspect was covered up. The suspect, the way he parked his vehicle, the way he left the scene, left very little evidence behind for us. And to be honest, it was one of those that we responded to and I thought there was no chance of solving this, even with the cameras. The detectives along with the whole CIU group, and I want to recognize all of the group, not just Detective Strickland, but the whole CIU group canvassed the whole neighborhood surrounding the Walmart and they still really couldn't locate any good leads or any good witnesses or any good video evidence. But he didn't stop there. He continued to canvass, he continued to go to different businesses, try to develop other witnesses, try to develop other information. And ultimately, in watching some camera footage, he located what he thought would ultimately would lead to be a key witness to this bank robbery. And getting a hold of that witness who doesn't even live here in state, lived in another state, but he was able to identify who this was, where they lived, make contact with this individual, who ultimately gave him the information on a suspect vehicle. And this suspect vehicle was identified through technology that we have within the Cottonwood Police Department and license plate readers. Led to the neighborhood in North Phoenix. The whole unit coordinated and worked together then to go follow up on this bank robbery suspect through surveillance, through ultimately authoring a search warrant for the suspect's residence. And inside the residence, after they took the suspect into custody, they located, identified, located, and arrested the suspect. And inside the residence, they located key evidence which implicated our suspect. And this, as I said, this was the type of case that really, from my experience of 30 years, had minimal chance of solvability. Yet because of the work of Detective Strickland, this case was solved. And on a side note too, while he was doing follow-up, he went to the Big Five store. I wish the employee was here because the employee looked at Detective Strickland when he was asking for some information. He said, "Oh, looks like Cottonwood's gonna be 0-for-2 on bank robberies." Which, because of Detective Strickland, that's not the case. We're 1-for-2. We're batting 500, which in Major League is pretty good. So I wanna take a chance again. I wanna not just recognize Detective Strickland because even though, you know, he did the majority of this work and he did an awesome work, but the entire unit put a lot of work and effort into this case. I can't think of anybody more deserving than the employee of the quarter than Detective Strickland.
Real quick, so just to reiterate what Chief had said. Detective Long is back here, Sergeant Scott. And then Detective Dever is our other member of our unit, she's on an elk hunt. But it was a collaborative effort along with the patrol response. Commander Braxton's not here, but he went down to Phoenix with us, helped serve the search warrant. The teamwork was what brought this across the finish line. And then also, my wife's in the back. Cases like this, you have 15-hour nights, 16-hour shifts for several weeks. And we've got four kiddos, just two in the back right now. But thanks to her, I was able to spend a lot of time on this case too. So thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, real quick question Detective Strickland. When you went down to Phoenix, did you tell them that Chief Frudenthal sent you down here to solve their crimes?
Yes, and we did not use MCSO.
And before we do, can I also recognize that other employees of the quarter nominated were Sheri Badger of Finance, Cody Blazer of Community Development, Katie Cook of HR, along with Matt Strickland from the Police Department, Ashton Talbert Sr. of Transit, Kevin Wallace of the Fire Department. So thanks to all of them for their excellent work for the city as well. Okay, picture. Yep, we've got plenty of time. The next thing that we're doing during this section of the evening is introduction of new employees. So we wanna see your shining faces and thank you for coming to be with us and be a part of the staff team here. In Community Development, we have Beth Pomeroy-Thiorette and Angela Wright. Are you guys here? Can we see you? You can come up and say hi to all of us? We can introduce ourselves.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ava Cutro and you'll learn a little more about me when Mario formally introduces me. It's my pleasure to introduce our two newest Community Development workers. We have Beth Pomeroy and Angela Wright. Angela joined us in September. She was born and raised in Alaska and moved here to be our Administrative Assistant. When in Alaska, she worked as an Office Assistant for an Engineering and Electrical Co-op as a florist and was the lead singer and guitarist in a rock band. So we're very happy to have Angela here. She's the person you meet when you come into our building and she's very happy to be near her new granddaughter. I also have Beth Pomeroy behind me. We seem to favor the non-contiguous U.S. states as Angela joined us from Alaska and Beth is joining us from Hawaii. Beth, while in Hawaii, was an investigator and Human Resources Manager and a Property Manager. But she didn't spend her whole life in Hawaii. Her earliest months were spent just outside the White House because her mom was a Secretary for the First Lady, Mrs. Kennedy. She also went to U of A and is a Wildcat, so it's more a welcome back to Arizona to have us here in Cottonwood.
Thank you.
Would others...
Would you like to say anything?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and also, you know, Council. I did have an opportunity to introduce myself informally, you know, a couple of months ago when I presented the Title VIII. But it's nice to be formally introduced. I'm very happy to be here and a part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say I'm very thankful for this employment opportunity. I've been very happy here. All the people have been super-nice and I just feel like I'm part of a community here. I'm really happy it's winter right now because when I got here, it was way too hot for me. And the girls in the office are happy too because I'm not turning on the air conditioning all the time.
It takes time to adjust. You'll get there. Thank you, thank you so much. It's wonderful to meet you. So in Human Resources, we have Leah Secavage and Katie Cook.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Wilber, Human Resources Director. And I have the pleasure of introducing to you both of my HR Specialist Twos, Leah Secavage and Katie Cook. So I'll start with Leah. Leah was hired on as an HR Specialist Two with us in May and she brings with us more than 18 years of workforce development experience, most recently serving as the Economic Workforce Development Operations Manager for the Northern Arizona Council of Governments, which most people know as NACOG. She has resided in Cottonwood since 2006. So she has some deep roots here and some excellent connections. She's currently serving as the Secretary on the Prescott Area Human Resources Association Board as well, which definitely will lend well to her time here with the city. So we're really happy to have her on the team with us. And then we have Katie. Katie was hired in June actually as the Admin Assistant for Human Resources and Finance initially and was recently promoted last month now, we're in December. So in November, she was promoted to an HR Specialist Two. So she's just at the very beginning stages of fulfilling that new role, which we're really excited about. Katie has a Bachelor's of Science degree from NAU and has previous experience working as an Accounting Tech Two with the City of Sedona and as a Supervisor and Manager of Miyamo Cafe in Sedona. She is a native to Cottonwood, which is kind of rare these days. And we are really excited to have her on board. So with that, please join me in welcoming Katie and Leah and I will turn it over to them in case they have anything they'd like to add.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. It's just been such an honor to be part of this amazing team and I'm looking forward to a very long tenure with the city. So thank you.
Glad you're here.
Yes, I just wanna say thank you for such a great opportunity and I'm very grateful to be part of such an amazing team here.
Thank you both, it's very nice to meet you. Okay, under City Administration, we have Ava Cutro and Michelle Costecki.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm pleased tonight to be able to introduce two new employees. This is my first time doing this in addition to theirs, so excuse me for a little clunky here. First and foremost, she introduced herself, Ms. Ava Cutro. Ms. Cutro has years and years of planning experience. She came to us upon the departure of Scott Ellis and has hit the ground running. Staff is excited to have her there. Ava spent roughly 13 years as the Community Development Director for the Town of Paradise Valley. Retired and then unretired and spent the last five years, roughly five and a half years, as the Planning Manager for the Town of Gilbert. So she has extensive experience in planning and local government and has already had an impact upon our department and staff is very pleased about that. Additionally, we have Michelle Costecki, our Economic Development Specialist, soon-to-be Economic Development Manager. As we have, as of yesterday, Ms. Lewis is no longer with us and so we're taking a look at kind of what those options are in that department moving forward, particularly with some consulting opportunities that we have. Let me go over real quick to sing a few praises of Michelle's. Michelle is a native Arizonan, resident of Clarkdale. She brings more than 15 years of leadership experience in economic development, organizational strategies, community engagement to the position. She has a long career with the Greater Sedona Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, so she has a strong background in tourism and is already enrolled for her first kind of immersive training in economic development. And I think will do us very well in the department in the capacity that she has chosen to continue on and kind of take that department, division to the next level here for the City of Cottonwood. And with that, I'll let them say a little bit about themselves.
Thank you, Mario, and hello again. As mentioned, I'm Ava Cutro and I've been here about five weeks and I've really enjoyed my time here. I want to thank you for allowing me to be your interim Community Development Director and really consider it a gift in my retirement to come to a city like this with a lot going on in community development and just explore the town and meet all the staff. It really is a wonderful community. And oddly, I've worked about 30 years in Arizona and this is the first city I've worked for. Gilbert and Paradise Valley are both towns. So smallest community, but the only city. So thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Excuse me, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. My name is Michelle Costecki. I've had the pleasure of speaking with you at various events and whatnot over the past 90 days, I think we're coming up to. I just want to say that I'm so grateful for the opportunity to be here. As Mario mentioned, I'm a native Arizonan and I've been in the area for about 15 years. I feel that Cottonwood has wonderful roots that I'm very committed to but also such wonderful possibilities and future. And I'm just so thrilled to be a part of that smart growth, that smart evolvement, I guess, or evolving. And it's just a pleasure to be here and be part of the leadership team to help make that happen and see it through. So I look forward to a lot of exciting opportunities and working with you. Thank you.
Thank you both, it's great to meet you. Yeah, we'll keep the conversation going. Okay, Police Department, we have Kellen Burns and Tyler Mathias. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. I do that every once in a while, just to keep people on their toes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So unfortunately, Kellen couldn't be here. Kellen, we were very fortunate to get Kellen. Kellen is a lateral from Texas. He worked in central Texas for a local municipality along with a county sheriff's office in Texas. For approximately six years, he moved out here to be closer to family. His father, who was a retired LA County Sheriff's Deputy after 30 years, now lives in the area and he wanted to be close to his father and his family. So he moved out here to be closer to family. But I think it's important to point out that Kellen had the choice of... He was the pick of the litter and he could have chose any police department and he chose to come to Cottonwood Police Department and we're super-excited to have him. If you didn't have a chance to see him on the news recently, he was the one that represented the Police Department related to our capture of the emu and the intention of the emu. He did an excellent job of representing us. Apparently, he's got some expertise as it relates to taking emus into custody and he was able to represent our Police Department really well. So it was really cool. And then the second one is Tyler. Tyler came to us from North Dakota. He's another lateral, right? And Tyler lateraled from a 911 center in North Dakota. He also came here to be closer to family and also to get away from the cold because North Dakota is very cold. You miss the cold?
Yeah.
Step outside a little in the middle of the night. You gotta work third shift, so step outside in the middle of the night and we'll see if you still miss it. But no, yeah, we're very fortunate again to have Tyler and have a lateral one who's... So he just, two weeks ago, completed his training? Two to three weeks ago, completed his training? If you're not aware, our Communication Center, it's very extensive training that they go through because they're not just dispatching for police, they're dispatching for fire. And there is a lot that goes into that and you have to be able to be proficient in all areas of it. And Tyler was able to breeze through that training. You know, some people, it takes over a year to just get trained. And for Tyler, we were fortunate to get him through that process much quicker. So we're very fortunate to have Tyler also. So...
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. It is actually a privilege to be here. Like Chief said, I moved down here roughly a year ago, almost to the date. Been with the city since mid-March and honestly, it's just been absolute privilege. This area is so proactive with everything and I honestly think it's truly underrated. So I'm very thankful to be here. Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler, good to meet you. Okay, last but certainly not least, Parks and Recreation now has Nick Hall.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I get the pleasure tonight to introducing you all to Nick Hall. If you've got an opportunity to meet Nick already, you'll know he's not a man of many words. And so he's already pressured me and said, "Don't make me speak, don't make me speak." So you might say thank you, but don't expect a long speech from him when we're done. Nick grew up in Georgia where he was born. He moved to South Carolina where he graduated as a gamecock from University of South Carolina with a degree in Sports Management...
Sport Entertainment Management.
Sport Entertainment Management. After college, or during college, he spent some time with the Blowfish, which is a semi-pro baseball club. He started out as an entry-level employee, worked his way through up to managing and organizing his own special events. And he decided, like all good athletes do, to bring their talents here to Cottonwood, Arizona. And so Nick has been with us now. He started just right before the trunk-or-treat. So if you were there, you got an opportunity to see him. You've already got to see the caliber of employee Nick has brought to our team and we're very thankful to have him. So Nick, would you like to say thank you?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Yeah.
If you skip reading all these stupid instructions, you can move this meeting right along.
That could go a lot faster that way.
There's going to be another one coming up.
So, here's the other thing, right? Like, this all this data.
Yeah.
We're in charge.
It's been pointed out to me that it is 6:00, so I guess I'll call the meeting to order. Could we do the roll call, please?
Here.
Councilmember Dowell.
Here.
Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Mosley.
Here.
Councilmember Weldon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Coates.
Here.
And Mayor Shaw.
Here.
And we have a call. Yes, we do. Would you join me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have a brief summary of current events by the Mayor, City Council, and/or City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. As a reminder, if you wish to speak to the Council on a matter which is not listed on the agenda, you must submit a request-to-speak form to the City Clerk or the City Manager by the end of this brief summary of current events. Okay. Anybody got any current events?
I do.
Saturday, December 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the Walmart parking lot is Share the Warmth. It is time, unfortunately, help donate gently-used coats, hats, gloves, scarves, blankets, and sleeping bags to help out those less fortunate people that may be homeless. And that's all I have.
On that same day in the morning, Chief Rudenthal will be, and his team will be hosting the Shop with a Cop. So, you'll see other agencies from around the valley helping Cottonwood PD shop with children in need, and you'll also see the parade from the airport to Walmart with the children. So, if you'd like to come cheer us on, we'll be on the road probably about, what, 10, about 10ish.
Well, we've got to participate in a number of business-related events over the past couple of weeks. On November 18th, I, along with Council, attended the opening of Blaze &amp; M BBQ. Blaze &amp; M is now doing a lunch barbecue, which I think is, I'm looking forward to partaking. At the grand opening, I got to have some, and it's worth the trip. On November 20th, myself and Council attended the ribbon-cutting for Marshalls. I am sure that most of you have already been there since then, so, but the store looks beautiful, and it's great to have a new major retailer in town, and I look forward to a lot of success. Also, on November 20th, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Mixer, the monthly mixer, hosted by Fuersa Local. A number of small businesses were in attendance and, you know, demonstrated their offerings. It's, you know, Fuersa Local is a tremendous supporter and advocate for small businesses in the Verde Valley, and it was, it was a lot of fun to see what they have to offer. And on November 21st, attended the ribbon-cutting for Stixman Diesel, their truck and auto repair. It's not really their grand opening. It's, they had an old location on Cherry Street that wasn't really adequate for their needs, and so they've moved into a very nice new facility on Sixth Street. It's behind a building that's behind another building, so if you ever look for it, just, don't necessarily trust your GPS. You ought to really, you know, look hard on your own for it. But I'm sure that, you know, the service makes up for the search. Thank you.
The only other thing I wanted to add was that Council attended the going-away party for Tricia Lewis, the former City Director of Economic Development. There was a great turnout of staff and people and organizations that Tricia has touched in her years of service to our community.
Mayor, Members of Council, I will offer up the following briefing items. We urge the public to join us for coffee with the Council this Thursday, December 4th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Cottonwood Recreation Center. The featured topic for this event will be my official introduction, followed by a Q&amp;A where folks can ask me whatever they want, and I'll address any public questions and concerns. Please come out, enjoy coffee, and a breakfast bar while sharing your thoughts in a relaxed setting. The City of Cottonwood is hosting its annual Mayor and City Council Tree Lighting Ceremony this Saturday, December 6th, at 6:00 p.m. in front of the Cottonwood Community Clubhouse. This event officially marks the beginning of the holiday season for us, and we invite family and friends to join us in Old Town. The Mayor and Council will lead the countdown to the tree lighting. Everyone is encouraged to join in the celebration. And then lastly, a reminder that we are partnering once again with the American Red Cross to host a blood drive on Wednesday, January 7th, at the Public Safety Multipurpose Room located at 199 South Sixth Street. The drive will take place from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Appointments can also be made through the Red Cross Donor App or by calling 800-733-2767. This is open to the public. We encourage all to attend. I regrettably will be in Cabo San Lucas and unable to attend, but I promise to give in lieu of that.
And I also want to mention, too, that I'm anticipating that we will be in attendance at the stationary, what this year is going to be a stationary parade at the fairgrounds. This, of course, is sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, and usually it moves down the street, but because of street repairs, it's being limited to being at the fairgrounds. And I believe that we, Council, will be there to, to address, you know, to say hi to people. They can come and ask us questions. They can just come and hang out. We'll be there.
Mayor, if I could follow up on that also, I want to encourage the public to turn out. There were concerns that perhaps the number of floats wouldn't be there, but Ms. Kosteki got a, had a meeting with the Chamber today, just as part of their normal, and the number of floats has dramatically increased since the last time. They'll have, I think, close to 30 tables that folks will also be setting up, and vendors and whatnot, so it's turning out to be quite an event to prove that Cottonwood is quite an agile community, and we're willing to kind of pivot a little bit, and next year the traditional parade will be back bigger and stronger.
Anything more? Okay. All right. Next is call to the public. The public may address the Council on matters directly relating to city business that are not listed on the agenda during the call to the public by submitting a written request-to-speak form to the City Clerk no later than the conclusion of the information reports slash updates portion of the agenda. There is a three-minute timeframe per speaker, and all comments shall be addressed to the Council as a whole and not to any member thereof, staff, or audience. The Mayor may direct a speaker to stop speaking and leave the podium or adjourn the meeting if anyone becomes disorderly or uncivil, makes personal attacks against any person or persons, or if the Mayor determines that the speaker is speaking about items that are outside the city's legal authority to act. I have one request to speak, and that's from Larry Gallagher. Mr. Gallagher, would you like to come on up?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Members of the City Council. My name's Larry Gallagher. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Elvaya Artists Association and the Verde Valley Photographic Society. And I'm here to thank you, to thank you profoundly on our behalf. Your advocacy, your support for art and for public events made our job easier. We just did a major art event. And I also wanted to thank Jack. Jack Teal and his staff, without them, we could never have done this. The show was called Double Vision, and it paired a photographer and an artist. Each interpret a single subject, presented side-by-side for the public to come into view, and then vote on their favorites. It was a week-long event, started on November 8th during Walking on Main, paired with an art sales, and went all the way through the following week, opened each evening, well, really from noon till about 7:00 in the evening every one of the days, and then Friday from 11:00 to 5:00 with the closing reception. We counted over 880 people who came to the event.
Wow.
And that's probably about a 10% lower than what it is, because not everybody picked up the ballots. That's what we use to count. So, we're probably pushing over 900 people. During that time, we were also supported by Northern Arizona Healthcare and the Wine Consortium to bring in a series of four different presentations in the evening that drew, it's not, I won't say an additional 145 people, because there was some double counting in there, but 145 people came to the evening events. The comments were universally positive about it. Our artists truly appreciate the work of Jack and his staff and your advocacy, because they don't get a chance to show their work very often. And I will tell you that the venue that we did it in, the Old Town Clubhouse, Community Clubhouse, is the only facility that we could have done this in. There were 84 pieces of art that we hung, 36 pairs of artists and photographers from Elvaya, and this year, we were able to invite Mingus High School in. So, Mingus bought six additional pairs for the total of 42 pairs and 80 people in the room. It was a tremendous success, and you deserve a lot of credit for your support for events like this in the community. And Jack and his staff have my undying attitude, I mean, my undying thankfulness for them, and I've told them, if they ever need anything, call me, I will come. But I'm here to thank you for that and appreciate very much what you have done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher, yes, could you tell us who was the winner of the ballot?
Embarrassingly, me and my wife. If you went to the show, Debbie's painting was of a tree that was the bent-over tree that she painted on the photograph. That was my photograph. And it just caught the imagination of the people of the show by a long shot, and it was very embarrassing. Not for her, for me. But thank you very much.
Yes, the opportunity to see that beautiful artwork. I appreciate that fact that you even created such a show for us. It was amazing.
Our artists appreciate it, because they never get a chance to show their art like that. So, again, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you for thanking us, actually. Yes, how kind. Okay, next is the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the Council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a Council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Well, we are, I'm afraid, going to pull number seven for the moment, but the other items...
John and I were discussing, we will also need to pull item five. I will speak to both of those items separately.
So, we're in a position to approve the minutes, and then we have the, we have the consideration and approval for the vehicle maintenance, the contract with Gus Rosenfeld, the waiver of the city's procurement policy for Arizona Utility Management, and then the consideration and approval of the Second Amendment to the lease agreement between the City of Cottonwood and David Heath, and the authorization for the Mayor to execute the agreement. Five and seven are set aside.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda for items one, two, three, four, and six.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Seflantis, you want to tell us about five and seven?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, item five, we requested to be pulled as we needed to have an amendment. Before you tonight was a request to allow a permit for us to cut through the street to do a pipeline repair. Beginning last Thursday and running through Sunday, we had eight additional leaks occur on that pipeline, and also another pipeline that runs parallel between Fourth and Fifth Street. I talked with our very wise city attorney, and he advises that in order to do it all as one permit, it meets the qualifications of our municipal code, which states a hardship exists and no reasonable other alternative is available. So, based on that, I would ask that Council approve the permit with an adjusted motion to read Elm Street between Fourth and Sixth Streets instead of between Fifth and Sixth Streets, and then that will suffice to cover the entire area.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve consideration and approval by the City Council of a permit to allow the Utilities Department to make a roadway pavement cut across Elm Street between Fourth and Sixth
exists and no reasonable other alternative is available. So based on that, I would ask that council approve the permit with an adjusted motion to read Elm Street between Fourth and Sixth Streets instead of between Fifth and Sixth Streets, and then that will suffice to cover the entire area.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve consideration approval by the city council of a permit to allow the utilities permit to make a roadway pavement cut across Elm Street between Fourth and Sixth Streets to replace a failing water line.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you good with that? Did that work?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item was item seven, which is a consideration and approval of a wa, or, I'm sorry, yes, the waiver of the procurement policy in order to accept the proposal from Retail Strategies. There was some language included in there at the request of the city attorney, because we'd been a little overzealous in our moving this forward and not finalizing a contract. We have, we are currently working back and forth on contract language, and there's some sticking issues in there that we're trying to work out. So in advance of that, I would just recommend that council agree to table this item until a future agenda, until we get the contract negotiated.
And I'm happy to offer a motion to table item number seven from the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Under new business, we have discussion and evaluation of options for the future permanent council chambers, and direction to staff to move forward with the preferred option. Hi, Mr. Hausman.
Hello. Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is David Hausman. I'm the Public Works Director. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide an update on the evaluation of the riverfront and spectrum sites for the permanent location of the council chambers. So on this first slide here, I have a timeline and background. So at the September 9th work session, council discussed long-term plans for the riverfront facility as the permanent and formal council chambers. Council directed staff to use our in-house expertise to evaluate the feasibility at two locations. Again, one of them being at this location here, at the riverfront facility, and then secondly, the newly acquired Spectrum building. So this next slide I put in, because there were some questions about our space needs assessment, I did want to note that I did provide a more detailed space needs assessment that was included in your packets. That kind of just breaks down each and into, each and every department's square footage needs. But the total occupied square footage need is 15,694 square feet. So this next slide will show you the usable, total usable space needed for renovation. So this is at the 651 West Mingus Avenue. I will note that it has been said that the city hall is 20,000 square foot, 10,000 square feet for the first floor, as well as 10,000 square feet for the second floor. Upon scaling this out, we note that there's approximately 17,500 square feet of usable space, which is approximately 8,750 square feet per floor. Again, that is a usable space. Again, when we remove the space that's used for the stairwells, the mechanical room, the elevator, those sort of things, reduce that square footage. Next, I'll go into this first floor concept, and like I mentioned, you know, staff had asked us to use our in-house expertise. I do have to give a shout out to my capital improvement project manager, Mike Gray. I think he did about five or six different renditions, trying to really, you know, get our needs assessment into this building for these concept, for this first and second floor concept. But first, I'll talk about the first floor concept here. Let me just see if I can put a, leave your pointer on here. All right. So right here in our first floor concept, we have three, we have three departments on the first floor. You know, you'll notice here is the entryway. This will be the west side of the building. This will be the south side of the building. This is where Maverick would be. So as you come in, we have the public common area. We put the, kind of the two most public-facing departments down on the first floor, that being community development, as well as utility billing. The other department that we have located on the first floor is the city clerk's office. And then you'll see, located on the first floor is the council chambers. So this concept for this council chambers is approximately 1,722 square feet. The existing riverfront, the building that we're in right now, is about 1,785 square feet. So we try to take a similar-sized council chambers and put it here within this building. We do have shared support down at the, at the first floor level with break rooms, mail-receiving rooms. We also have kind of a executive conference room off the side of the chambers, located here. We also utilize this space, kind of during the day, as another medium conference room that can be utilized by staff. So we looked at that as far as this first floor concept. You also noticed the restroom facilities in the building, we didn't move around because of plumbing and other things, we didn't know what we were getting into, so we kind of left the existing restroom facilities where they were at and where they were located in the building, as well as these, these restrooms, these public restrooms here as you enter the facility. Moving to the second floor, the second floor concepts house the remaining departments. You have the IT department, you have the administration department, as well as human resources and finance and purchasing. There is some shared support in the second floor. One thing that I didn't note, and I do want to note, I'll kind of come back here, one thing that I skipped over, you'll see a lot of arrows that are pointing to these structural column supports. One thing that I will note that we did find those in the plans when we were going through these, is that there are structural column supports both on the first and the second floor. Just something that we need to be aware of, especially with the council chambers, anything of that large of a size room is going to incorporate some sort of a column structural support, so we'll have to just take account for that within our design. So again, you'll see here on the second floor, those support columns. And again, we have various shared support, secondary break rooms, copy, supply rooms, as well as a large conference room. So on this next slide, you'll note that there are several areas that weren't included in these conceptual layouts. We had a total space reduction of approximately 1,514 square foot. Here's a listing of, of items that kind of were not included. The legal department, we had a small conference room, a medium conference room, quiet room slash mother's room. We also had to reduce HR by 28 square foot, as well as the IT department by 430 square foot. Now, this isn't necessarily a list of which departments we chose to cut out, it was just when we were putting this together, just for the sake of discussion, this is kind of what you could see in that needs assessment, that wouldn't be listed. So we would need an additional 1,514 square foot in order to fit the council chambers in there.
Can you go back to the first floor?
Yes.
Drawing? I'm sorry, I thought I did see a, like a mother's room on one of the floors. I can't remember. I thought it was the first floor.
Let me go to the second floor. And I know, and I apologize, it is hard to read. You'll note that it probably is listed here, but it's in red, which means it wasn't added as far as that shared support.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So again, those are the square footages that weren't included in these concepts. Any other questions before, on the Spectrum facility, before I move to the council chambers, or would you like me to just go ahead and continue with my presentation?
I'm okay with continuing.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I'm not. I just want to make sure I understand that the, the slide, go back, maybe two slides? No, they're not included. So that was not included?
Correct.
In the, which figure, the 17,500 or 15,694?
It was the 15,694. So the total needs assessment, we went ahead and tried to incorporate our needs assessment, including the council chambers. We have, basically, what we have is we have a, a total space reduction of about 1,514 square feet. Now, I don't want to, I don't want council to look at this list and say, hey, this is a list that we're not doing. This is just an example of square footage that we took out in order to make it work.
Right.
So there's, there's a multiple of different things that we could do, you know, reducing department sizes, conference room sizes, different things along those lines, in order to, but we're basically 1,514 square foot short.
And that's in order to include the council chambers in that first floor?
Correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So can we go back to the first floor plan?
Yes, ma'am.
So the council chambers on the first floor, you may not be able to answer this, but how would the council and public seating be configured in that Pentagon shape?
So when we looked at it, we would have the dais, again, we would have to, you know, work with, work with these beams, the dais being somewhere in here, where the public seating's back in here, again, entryway into the executive conference room. Again, we didn't go into that level of detail, but you kind of, kind of see, you would have, we kind of put like an entryway off this public common area here. We wanted to keep in mind that in case of an emergency, that we wanted to have a doorway here that we can get to a quick exit as well. So we were looking at kind of multiple exit strategies, kind of for a public gathering if needed. So that was kind of the concept where, where we came up, where again, it wasn't interfering, you know, it's interfering with two of the columns, but again, we were looking at that access. Number one, for the public, being able to be in that public lobby, kind of a space, being able to enter and exit the chambers, and then again, you know, having the multiple exits, so.
And the columns, how big are those columns? Are we talking about...
I haven't seen them, because they are covered up. So I don't know exactly how big they are. You know, they could be small nine-by, nine-by-nine kind of steel columns that are supporting the second floor, and then again, in the second floor, supporting the roof. I don't have those detailed level of plans to actually note the size of the column. I do know that they're hidden behind walls, though.
I only asked in terms of the sightline question. That was my, there you go again.
And I do know that there are council chambers that do have structural columns in them. A lot of them utilize them for, you know, TV monitoring screens for the public, things along those lines. It's not ideal, but it's not unheard of. But it's something that the design team would definitely have to look at and configure.
And on the south side, are those windows that I'm seeing?
Yeah, well, yeah, there are windows. You mean that those blocks? Yeah, those are windows. We didn't touch any of the windows, so what was ever, what was existing, we didn't even look at the exterior of the building for that.
Regarding the columns, it's probably the same type of question, yes. Do we have any idea if the seating would be similar to this? Do we have, can we guess? Or where does that stand?
One more time, I'm sorry.
The seating, would the space with the columns be similar to this?
Absolutely. I think we would have the same amount of seating of what we have, just given the fact that we're utilizing the same amount of square footage, so I think we could definitely fit the same seating in there. And it does beg to question that, you know, some of that seating could have some sight distance, you know, some sight visibility issues with council and that sort of thing, but you could have the same amount of seating.
On the space needs assessment, it talks about future employees. How, how near-term are we talking in terms of future?
Great question. You know, I sent this out to all the department heads. You know, when we, when we initially did this needs assessment, some of those were, you know, as the city evolves, you know, positions come. We originally did this, I think, back in 2002 or 2003, so we had to change some of those future employees. For instance, I think Amanda had an HR specialist, too, that was in there as a future employee in our original space needs. Again, that was changed, and it's no longer a future employee. Again, I can't speak to each and every individual department. I can tell you that we do average, you know, close to, you know, two to three positions a year, is what I see trending. Kirsten, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Again, not necessarily all those positions would be located within this building, but I couldn't really tell you per each department in those future projected positions and when those would be needed.
So right now, we're pretty much, we could do it with what you said, but there's really no room for growth, is what I'm hearing.
No, so we have the future growth in there. What I'm, what I'm saying is, is our entire space needs assessment that I showed you, that you guys have in your packet, we would have to take about 1,500 square feet off.
Okay.
We'd have to give somewhere in there to make this work, to make this chambers work in this facility.
And then, secondly, are you going to get into parking at all?
I am not.
How many parking spaces? Do we know how many parking spaces are in this?
Yep.
So we did look at parking last time, when I had spoke with Scott Ellis in the respect to the parking situation, and we had spoke with this, we had spoke about this with Scott, myself, and Tom, and we can actually, we have enough parking for, you know, a council chambers, and that's due to the fact that the council chamber starts at 6:00, you know, business hours, and prior to that. So there, it wouldn't be a competing functions that we would need for that. To answer your question, Councilmember Dell, I want to say we're, I don't have that information in front of me, I can get it for you, but we're roughly 70-something parking stalls.
Say again?
Seventy-something parking stalls, 72, 74, somewhere in there.
Do we have?
That we have, that are existing there.
So with staff, we're probably at 25 on a council, so now we're down to 50, so we could put about 50 people in there for extra, I'm guessing.
Yeah, like I said, per, per the code, again, I have that information, I just didn't bring it with me tonight.
That'd be minus seven as well, Councilwoman Dell.
With the council members, correct?
Yeah, with council, that's going to be parking in there, so your 50 goes down to, what, 40, whatever, 43?
However, it was just pointed out that they wouldn't, that staff wouldn't be parked there at the same time as council meetings are occurring.
Just the staff that are present at the meetings.
Correct.
Yeah. Do we know how long we've been in the current city hall, and the finance and HR buildings? Does anybody have?
Councilmember Marks, a very long time. Let's see, when I started in 2001, we occupied the city hall, and it was finance and admin, and planning and zoning was in the building that finance is currently in, and the police department was in our old building that we sold across the street, and they had been there for quite a while.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before I continue? Okay, moving on to the riverfront council chambers, so what we ended up doing is we took the building plans for this facility here, and we kind of did a small rendition of what this council chambers could look like if it was more permanent. You'll notice what we did here is we, we put in some what we call hip walls. The hip walls would be kind of located right where this dais is, I'm sorry, right where this podium is. We did include kind of a section here for department directors during the council meetings. You'll note here, in two different areas, we were looking at the possibility of having these dual ceiling-mounted TVs, so that presentations could be viewed by council, as well as the public, by floor monitors. We would take the existing AVIT booth that we have here and kind of recess it into this existing room. So again, that this is out of the way, but there would be an opening to where the AVIT could actually see the meeting and be able to run the meeting, but again, just not have it here, just kind of tuck that away a little bit. We have this area here is kind of that council ante-room, where council currently parks behind here. here. They could come in and kind of come into this room just right to my right as a council ante room, as well as utilize this existing space here for the executive conference room. I know in our discussions at the work session, there were some concerns with the amount of glass and such that are behind council in the rear of the dais. A couple of options, we could choose to go just steel doors and basically wall this section off to where it's not all glass, maybe keep the small sliver of glass above that to allow some natural light in, but if it was council's desire, we could also go ahead and make that to where it was a solid wall. But that was just another example of something that we could do here at the Riverfront chambers. Onto my last slide here is the estimated cost of a permanent chambers at Riverfront. So as we mentioned at the work session, on September 15th of 2003, last architects had prepared a construction cost estimate for the permanent relocation of the council chambers here to the Riverfront building, and that was just a little over a million dollars. What staff did is we applied an annual escalation rate of about 4% to 5% through 2025, and we estimate that this project would cost approximately 1.17 to 1.19 million. We did have some associated costs. We ended up, staff did end up getting a quote for a dais, that was a little over $40,000 just for the dais. In talking with the City of Prescott, their AVIT equipment that they utilized in their new chambers was about $200,000, so we kind of had that number. And staff also got a quote for a rear gate and power to that gate, and that was about $20,000 for that rear gate. And again, that secures that rear gate in the back when council's in session.
Mr. Hausmann, does this cost estimate include providing for accessible parking nearby as we've talked before?
It does not, but my department is currently working on accessible parking by utilizing the existing handicap parking that we have, the existing ADA parking that we have, and having an accessible route across the street. My department is working on that currently.
So would that lead to an extra cost?
Not necessarily with this project, no.
Okay.
Because no matter what this turns into, I think that having some ADA accessibility into this facility is needed, so.
Yes, absolutely.
That is something that my staff is looking at.
Thank you.
Can you elaborate on the AVIT cost? Because we already, I mean, some of the AVI, I understand, would be upgraded, but, you know, for the IT, is this a tear out and new install, or is it an upgrade?
Yeah, that's a great question, absolutely. So council has an idea, all this equipment here, I think, was taken from the rec center. So this is what the rec center utilized for all of their meetings and stuff that they had here. So when we actually moved the chambers down here, we took rec center chairs, and we took their tables, and we took their AV equipment. So yes, it would be an entire upgrade of all of our AV and IT to really standardize. There's a lot of different things that we could do to where, you know, some council chambers that we have visited, you know, they have actually computers like built into each of the seats, right, to where council's not only seeing the presentation up above, but it's just kind of right there in front of them. There's electronic voting systems that they have in place. You know, sometimes, and I think, you know, our IT has done a great job of making what we have work, but having better sound quality, you know, just those type of items that are needed in the AVIT. Maybe Kirsten can speak a little bit more to the equipment we have, or what maybe some of those upgrades would be, but yeah, it is a pretty big price tag for that.
Madam Mayor, if I could jump in here also, Mr. Marks, to your question, when we had the virtual meeting with the City of Prescott representatives, that figure comes from what it costs them to do the sound in their council chambers. I think I'd shared with most of you that they have a three-story building, 10,000 per floor. They originally placed the chambers on the third floor, only to find out that it just didn't work with their public and some of the limitations they had, so they moved it downstairs. But to do the true assessment for sound, much as we talk about parking and that sort of thing, there are true ADA requirements when it comes to video presentations and the size of the screens and the sound for those that are hearing impaired, all of those that are elements that need to go into, I think we can screw around them with this temporary facility, but when we start to invest in a permanent facility, there are requirements that start to send those costs up, much as Mr. Hausmann says, a permanent dais would also include permanent monitors for you folks, so you're not squinting, much like I am, or looking at my own here, but as the presentation is being showed to the public and to you on the screens that face your way, you would have your own monitor in front of you that you could log into each time and access, because there will be electronic voting as part of that. The other thing that many cities use is a separate video service that is tied to your agenda management system, so that in the future, if someone wants to review a meeting, they can go to that meeting, pull up the agenda, click item seven, and it'll immediately take them to the video portion where I was describing that we needed to table that item. And so it makes it a lot more user-friendly and ADA compliant for the public as they want to access our meetings and our minutes in the future.
As far as the equipment listed here, we would need the same at the either building, correct, minus the rear gate?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions councilmen may have.
So, and I know you may not be able to answer this, but just can you say whether the ease of renovation would be easier at one facility versus the other?
I can say that just due to, if I go back to the first floor concept, and I know it's kind of, I wish I could zoom in here. Actually, maybe I can. You'll see the area, you might be able to see the area, maybe not. I can on my screen. Basically, if everything that has to be removed in order to fit that chambers in there, and then actually having to fit those departments in there. When you look at this facility, again, you know, putting in a hip wall, you know, possibly just doing some exterior stuff here, a rear gate, and then really what we're looking at is, you know, your AV needs, your IT needs, your dais integration, I would say that this would be the easiest facility.
Same type of question, is the cost, relative cost, what would the cost be? Can you even say that?
I can't, I really can't, and Mario really wanted me to put a cost to it, and I honestly couldn't.
And, you know, to his credit, I backtrack, because it's, and I've said this to you folks individually, I believe when you look at the facility we sit in today and what the costs that staff said it would be, and then what the engineers said it would be, and then it came in more. I think with the Spectrum building, the benefits of a design-build contract is that designer that says, here's the estimates, also has to build it, and so if it comes in more and there's change orders, then you're going to say, hey, you designed this thing, like, why is it like that? That's why, you know, I went back to the motion, and the motion said to use our vast expertise. Unfortunately, we don't have architects or anything, and so I'm just, I was very hesitant for us to put a price to it, because we, quite frankly, we could tell you 2 million extra dollars, and it could be five, or it could be 500,000. We have no way of knowing until we have professionals that come in. We have the luxury or benefit of having professionals previously give us an estimate for this facility. That's the only reason why we were able to extrapolate that and provide that to you.
So what would the cost be for a rough cost estimate for renovation of the facilities? Because, you know, I'm leaning towards this facility, but honestly, if I were to learn that this would cost more than the Mingus Avenue facility, that would sway my decision if there was a big difference in expense. So my question is, what would it cost to get a cost estimate? Because, you know, I'm also thinking back to the wastewater treatment facility learnings, and one of them is making decisions without all the information that's needed, and then maybe incorrect decisions are made, and so I just, if it's not too expensive, and some people might balk at it, but I think it could be helpful to have a cost estimate.
And Vice Mayor, if I could, again, staff put these conceptual drawings together, any architect's not going to take these and run with it.
Right.
I just want to make that clear. So, you know, to put a cost on to kind of what we did, you know, could it be done? Sure. What would that cost be? I couldn't tell you right now. But again, it could change, right, given that a new designer comes in and the facility design changes, so the cost estimate that we were told based upon this could be completely different from when we actually go into design, and let's say it's located somewhere else, and like I said, the cost could change. And so to give like a clear cut, here's a cost, so that council could go, okay, does it make more sense to put it here in the Spectrum building versus the Riverfront facility? Again, that would be hard to do without actually having, you know, this design with the chambers in there.
So then, even once they do the design, there may be surprises they find during the demo, right, that results in change orders, so the estimate we get may not be what we're ultimately paying. Is that?
It's a fair assumption, yes.
Part of the problem that we're looking at, though, is that this, this new building that we have purchased is going to be renovated in toto, and what the city council chamber amounts to is kind of a big room. It's a big empty room. Most of the time, it's just, this, without chairs in it, is just a big empty room. So the cost of it is not something, you really can't reasonably compare it at this stage of discussion. The point that we're trying to get to, and I wish I could be, I wish I could just be persuasive about this, but what we're really looking at is, we've got a building here that kind of sits in our park area. There are really good things that could be done with this particular building, other than making it a permanent city council chamber. Whereas this, with this building, we're not losing a lot of space, and I really am not certain that I care to have the idea of, oh, we're sacrificing other people's spaces to it. No, that's not how design works. I mean, either we're designing it with the idea in mind that we can have a city council chamber there, or we're not. And then, what is that space for? Well, it's for the, all of these other little things will give back a few square feet to this department and that department and things like that. Now, are those things, were they necessary to begin with? I'm not certain. And because we have to make a decision, we're here tonight to decide, do we want to build this out, or do we want to include a city council chamber? It's not a question of, it's not about cost, it's not about the size of it. We don't have to worry that much about parking at the moment either. What we need to decide is, what do we want for the future of Cottonwood? Should we, you know, is the idea that we can combine city services in a single building, or is it not? I mean, what's, why not, you know, like the City Hall over in Prescott, we would have city services, instead of the city clerk's office being in Old Town, well, the city council chamber's over here, her office would be right there, right at the council chamber, which is the way it always used to be. That's the way it was before the city council chamber was moved here. So, you know, what I'm trying to get us to think in terms of is not bare bones cost and whose square footage is going to be sacrificed. What we're looking at is, what do we want the future to look like? Do we really think that this is so perfect as a space that we should utilize this rather than putting city services in a single building? Because the question that I asked last time was, can it be done? And the answer is, yes, it can. We can have approximately the same amount of square footage if we put a council chamber in the Spectrum building. And if that's true, then why not do that and leave this building for some other really excellent community purposes, ones that I haven't even thought of yet, but ones that we can consider if we have this space available? Because friends of the Verde River would like to have a river center. Well, this is a good spot for it, because it's, well, at the river. You know, there are other things that this space could be utilized for, and it doesn't require renovation at that point. If this was used as an educational center, there's not a lot of renovation required. It could be done pretty easily. And there are ways and means to, I'm not really thinking of it being cost-effective, but I am thinking of it being something that can be contributive to the city and to the region as a whole. And so I keep trying to think, what will people think 10 years from now, when we're not the city council anymore? Will they be in agreement that this was the best choice, or will they wonder why we didn't put the council chamber in the building with all of the other city services in the first place?
When we first looked at buildings to acquire, the main driver, at least I thought the main driver, was to have something that our great city staff would be proud to call their home. Something that has, you know, within a reasonable cost, all the amenities and all the space and everything that was needed, you know, that was reflective of how great our city staff is. I would disagree with the statement, it's only a few square feet. We're talking about 1,500 square feet of the current assessment. We've been in the current, you know, we've been in our current buildings now for years and years and years, and my expectation is, we will not be in this building just for years, we will be in this building for decades. Okay? That makes it, you know, that is what makes it a good value. We will, but right now, unfortunately, with the council chambers there, and we're just taking out the cost factor, with the council chambers in the Spectrum building, not only are we not accounting for future growth, we're squeezing out current needs. And for me, if I'm, hold on, unless I'm missing something, I mean, that's, that's what I'm seeing. We have, we have a building here that, prior to this becoming council chambers, has sat vacant for I don't know how long. It has served our needs, not only for city council, council sessions, council work sessions, planning and zoning, historic preservation, airport commission, so this is, this is a facility that gets used often. And I'll also say this, money does count. The cost is important. Now, personally, based on, you know, my general experience during, you know, my past lives, you know, with new construction, you know, I'm willing to bet $10 that, you know, doing a demo, and you never know what surprises you find when you do a demo, doing a demo and a build-out is probably going to cost more than doing a build-out at Riverfront. So I'm, you know, my, at this point, unalterable position is that we leave the chambers at Riverfront.
And I have a question regarding, you know, costs. So if we did a cost analysis to do it over there, we would have to do, hire an architect to do a cost analysis with? to do a cost analysis with putting the council chambers there, as well as without putting the council chambers there, correct?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay, so that's a double hit, which I don't think we need.
And that would be based on their kind of conceptual design that they would have for that.
Right. So, and then there would also be a cost, no matter, if we went over there as well, to renovate this, whatever that is.
Correct.
So that's another cost. And cost matters to me, too. I care about cost, and who's paying for this? Our taxpayers. That's my way of thinking.
So what you're saying is, then, that not only do we have to redo this whole building, which we do, but we also have to redo this building, too, in addition to this building? Because that's what's going to happen.
We have to re-
It's not either or. This building is not, you know, if you've discussed this with Mario, he's pointed out that people are not just going to move into this building as it stands. This is going to be renovated anyway. It's all going to be rearranged anyway.
Correct.
So then, if we don't put council chambers there, then we have to fix this building, too.
We would have to renovate this building if somebody else used it anyway.
No, we wouldn't.
Well, I'm hearing we would.
That's probably true.
Well, I heard we would.
Why would we?
I never said that we would have to renovate that. If somebody else utilized it.
So people could just use it as is?
In the past, when this was in the chambers, this was a rented space, so there was, I think, Jack, were you in charge of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was a rentable space, we utilized it for meetings in the city. I know there was a number of tables and chairs, and it was a rentable space.
Okay, so bearing that in mind, then, again, in my mind, it would cost us more to put the council chambers there than renovate it here.
I think it's difficult for them to-
Wait a minute. What's that?
It's hard to pin them down on a-
Yeah, right.
Yeah. What we do know is that either way, it's going to cost us 40,000 plus for a dais, regardless of what that's going to be. So that cost that we showed for here is going to be either place, and the cost for the IT slash audio/video is going to be the same. So that cost that you showed for here, part of that is movable over there, it's going to happen either way in the same place. And then I'll just leave it at this, because I'm just going to leave it short. I agree with Councilmember Marx, and I'll just leave it at that.
I do as well.
So I'm in support of the Riverfront facility because I don't find the Mingus Avenue facility as acceptable because of some of the reasons that have been cited, including putting council chambers in there would be done at the expense of decreasing the space available for staff. I find that Pentagon shape a little weird and potentially hard to work with, and with more demo required, there's potential for more surprises, as Councilmember Marx said. I think a lot of the other things are similar between the two facilities, as Councilmember Dowell pointed out. So I'm in favor of having council chambers at Riverfront.
Another thing that I want to mention, it seems like egress and egress is better in this facility. Is that, I mean, there are more means of egress here, or is that not?
I wouldn't say that there would be a facility that would have more means of egress inside the facility.
Than here.
Well, let me give you an example, we have a front door and a rear door, right? We proposed the same thing, kind of, in this facility where we would have kind of two-
Okay, so it's, they're similar.
Right.
Well, we'd probably get out of here faster. I mean, that's, I just think we could get out of here faster, just because of the parking. There's going to be a line of people trying to get out of there, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
I'm in concurrence here, I think we should leave the council chambers here at Riverfront instead of up there at the Spectrum building. I think this is a lot better and more suited for multiple uses, as you pointed out. So I say we stay here.
And I also suggest, you know, that we stay here at Riverfront. My question is, when this is renovated, where do we go? But-
So in the past, we've relocated the chambers to the rec center, so in their multipurpose rooms.
Okay. But I support staying here and its renovation.
So is it just a direction, or is it a vote?
There are two, there's two separate motions.
One or the other, is what you said?
Yep.
Okay, I move to make the Riverfront permanent council chambers.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Dowellis?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coates?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
No.
And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, councilmember requests for future agenda item. Anybody got any of those? Motion for accepting the claims.
I move to approve the claims report for December 2nd, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.